So I want to.
So this is what we went through the other day. And now we're, are we just checking on the corrections?
Well, that's what I want to discuss. In my business experience, we used to do what was called zero-based budgeting. And we talked about that here with the city over the years. We never got around to it. It's more difficult because you start each year with a clean slate and say, what do we need for this year? And historically has happened in the city, and I was looking through these numbers when we got the revised numbers last month. And we're just taking a percentage and increasing. And what we do is we increase off the proposed budget from the previous year. And when we do the, you know, the zero-based, you go, you just kind of wipe out that and you start over to say, what do we need for this year? And so I started looking at what more realistic is if we took the numbers we got. And, you know, we only have eight months out of 12 right now to go on, but based on that, we have projected numbers of where we're going to be at the end of the year. And if we took those projected numbers and based our increase in 2022 off the projected rather than the budgeted, that it wouldn't be zero-based, but it'd be a little more accurate than what we're doing. Because what we're doing is building up additional fund balance. And so I started looking at the 2021 budgeted amount, 1,870. And I'm, for references, I'm looking at page 11 in the one that came out August 30th. So today's packet. If you turn to page 11. So we have 2019, 2020, 21, projected 2021 budget and 22 proposed. Now, what we used to get was a packet like this. So we would get, when we're doing our budget discussions, we would get an interim report to date saying, as of August 31st, here's everything we've spent in these categories. You could extrapolate eight months' worth of expenditures, four months to go. Is this something that's heavily spent? First part of the year, second part of the year, you could figure out about where you were going to be. And then we would have our budget by category here. So you would know what's in each of these categories. So it was a little easier to figure out. When Laurie Jaeger came on, it was changed, so we didn't have the details anymore. But if we work on page 11, we have total expenditures for the year. 2019 was 1,756. 2020 was 1,676. And projected for 2021 was 1,593. So it's around to 1,600. And our budget was 1,871. So if you take a look, we are 17.5% under budget this year, which is a good thing. But what we're comparing our 2022 budget is to that 2021 budget, which is 17% high. And so if you compare our projected 2021, what we think we're going to spend this year, the 1,600, to the 1,922, that's a 21% increase. If you compare it to the 2021 budgeted amount, it's a 2.7% increase. So there's a big difference between 2.7 and 21. So I, you know, not to go back to zero-based budgeting, but I had a couple of thoughts that went through my mind as I was going through this. At our last meeting, we discussed potentially having the sheriff contract start mid-year, starting July rather than January. That would save us about $60,000 next year. The problem with that is that $60,000 goes into the following year when we do have the full contract. So that's that extra $60,000 we're picking up in 2023. Well, as Laurie Jaeger was telling us, that in 2023, we're going to pick up all that bonding money too. So we're going to be looking at more like a 10% increase in that year as opposed to and then adding on the $60,000 on top of that. So I thought, is there a way we could fit the entire sheriff's contract in this year? And not have that extra bump in 2023 when we're already going to have a huge bump from the bonding bill? So what I looked at was if we took the projected 2021, which is 1,593, so let's say 1,600, and we put 10 and 1/4% on top of that. Just to say that for whatever increases we need. But this year, we got through with that much money. Add 10% for growth. That would put us at All right? If we put on the sheriff's contract of 114,290, the total addition over what's already in the budget, that would put us at 1,871,116. Our current budget for this year is 1,871,565. So basically, it's spot on. So that would allow us a 10% increase over this year, the entire sheriff's contract, and still come in with what we budgeted for this year. So we'd have a 0% increase in our levy and still be 10% over what we spent this current year. So, you know, I worked through those numbers just to see, looking at what the growth was between previous years, this year. In our budget, we have a $15,000 unallocated contingency fund as well. So we've got $15,000. It isn't budgeted for anything, it's just for, if we're, if we're in need of the extra $15,000. So we have a little fudge factor in there. But if we take this year and repeat it with a 10%, 10.25% increase, so 10 and 1/4 increase, and we put in the entire sheriff's contract starting in January, we'd come out with the exact same budget we have this year.
Okay. Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Okay. Obviously, I'm not... What about the heavy equipment that we wanted to get, that we put on hold? Was it a plow or what was the cost of that?
That's in the bond.
Is that going to cover it so we don't have to? I mean, are we getting that machine or do we need to put the $60,000 toward that? That vehicle or that?
The... We, when we talked to Bruce Kimmel from Ellers last meeting?
Yeah.
The decision, when Laurie and Laurie had worked with him on that bond, is we would have last year's road projects, this year's road projects, the fire engine, the incidental tools, the $100,000 worth of tools that they need, the SCBA packs and things like that. It would be the snowplow truck at $270,000 and $75,000 for a new mower. So that's all in the bond.
Okay. Okay. I just want to make sure we haven't just pushed that aside.
Doing what we're doing here doesn't affect that.
Okay.
And that bond we start paying on next year. Now, in addition, this year, this month, we paid off, was it, Laurie, was it the grader or the fire truck? So we paid off the grader this month. So that's a bond we've been paying for 10 years. So that bond's paid off. Next year, we pay off the refinancing of the maintenance building. So that's another bond that's paid off. So that will go, our intention was not to reduce the levy on that, but to put those, keep putting that money aside for our new bond payment. And then in 2023, our third bond payment for the fire engine, for the, our fire engine, Engine 50, is complete. So those monies will roll into the bond payment, was the intention. Now, in addition, and I don't know because I don't have the breakout here, but we have LGA funds of $51,000 coming in this year. Now, LGA funds, we never know from year to year. If you haven't heard our population estimate
Oh, yeah.
in 2019. In 2019 was 4,741 people. And that's what they based our federal COVID funds on.
Right.
That's why we're getting $500,000. Last year, in 2020, the Met Council estimated we were about 4,850. So I thought with all these new homes coming in, we're going to be over 5,000.
Right.
The census numbers just came in. We're at 4,536. We went up 93 people in 10 years.
Are you kidding me? What are we doing wrong?
Well, I think that...
That we're not giving population...
My speculation is, you know by looking around in the last 10 years, there's more than 10, more than 90 people that are new. But I'm guessing people didn't fill out their census forms.
Well, also, we haven't allowed very many home projects going, you know, big developments. And we're getting a few coming in now, so that'll make a difference. But that's not going to make a difference now.
I just don't know how we went from... Now, again, Met Council estimates every year in between the census, and they may be aggressive, but they take it based on, you know, building permits. They take it on an average of, I think it's 2.9 people per household, it's almost three people per household. And they look at building permits and they estimate based on activity. And somehow, they had us up to over 4,800 and now by census, our official is 4,536. So we literally went up 93 people. But we can't do anything about it. It's just, it's going to affect funding in the future. So if there's small road fundings, I thought we'd fit into the, if we got over 5,000 people, we'd be in with everybody else on road funding. Now we stay in the small roads. And the small road funds aren't guaranteed from year to year. They're trying to set up a formula so that people in small cities know what they're going to get, and you can put it in your budget. But right now, we don't have that. So our LGA this year is $51,000. We got part of it, $25,000 in June or July. We'll get another $25,000 at the end of the year. We also have small city road funds. And that's about 89 plus, almost 90,000. So 44,000 plus was received this summer. Another tranche will be at the end of the year. So those are things that the LGA can be used to balance out. The intention there is to soften the blow of levy increases.
Right.
So that the cities aren't bumping the levies up. Neighbors around in some cities are getting $2 million.
Too many what?
$2 million from LGA. Minneapolis is getting 28 million. But because our criteria out here is such, I think, you know, 50,000 is a decent amount. But that's, you know, that's also money that's going to come in here that we haven't accounted for. And so Laurie, in it, typically, if money that isn't spent in a year continues to roll over to the general fund or into the account it's designated for. So in the road funds, whatever we don't spend by the end of the year will stay in the road account.
Yes. Or you can transfer it back to the general fund if you choose.
Yeah. Except for, I don't know on small cities road fund that we can put that back into general.
That has to be used for roads.
Right. But that being said, we have almost $90,000 that can be put towards roads. To give us, again, some buffer here. We got $15,000 that we put in there as an unallocated contingency fund. We'll have 90,000 from the road funds that will go towards any road issues we have. So we have some buffer in this. So, you know, for your consideration, I would just say one of the options would be to take our projected at 10.25%, put in the entire sheriff's contract and replicate our 2021 budget rather than going up 21% to 1,922. So I'll give you a moment to think that over and come up with questions.
Well, that seemed, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
That seemed pretty straightforward. Where in all the pages do we have to, do we have to go through and adjust a bunch of different pages or is it more simplistic than that? It sounded pretty simplistic. Go 10% up and add sheriff's contract. But does it get more complex than that? Like, do we have to adjust this column, this column, or this column, or?
So what I did, you know, anticipating that, you know, if we were to do that, what would it look like? And so what I, what I went through is put the the items that would need to be significantly changed, I highlighted them in yellow. And so we can, we can go through those and say, here's the ones that, we wouldn't have to change everything. But obviously, what we projected, what we're proposing for 2029, I'm sorry, 2022, is 21% more than what we're currently having. So something would have to come out of that. And so what I looked at is what was in our 2021 budget that differed significantly from the 2022 proposed or the 2021 projected. So there are some of those that we could go through. And obviously, Laurie, you're going to have to take a look and say, this year, that was artificially low for whatever reason. So if this year was, you know, we know with staffing issues, that there are going to be some of those that may have been counted. You know, Joe, if he's not getting paid by the city, you know, he's getting paid by workers comp or whatever it is, that's going to affect that. So I didn't want to go there with the office staff. What the leave that was taken was countered by somebody else being there full-time. So I'm not sure that that countered 100%, but that's something we have to look at, say, you know, what is this you're going to bring? If we increase 10%, does that still cover what you think the expenditures actually would be? Councilmember Greenberg.
Does he expect, have we received yet from Shane his thoughts on road improvement?
Mayor and Council, no. Shane hasn't gotten back to me on what he thinks for the, he doesn't see any significant road improvement projects for the future after this year. So he hasn't gotten back to me on repairs or anything.
So we'll have to, you know, and that will be part of the discussion, I think, as we, as we look at the capital improvement plan. Because right now, the capital improvement plan has $900,000 in 2022. And I don't know what that's for. As I've been driving of the projects that are currently underway, every time I drive down 185th and 187th, there's going to be some big potholes at the cracks there. And we were leaving that because we thought we were this close to 5,000 people, then we could get state aid for that road. Now that we're 500 residents away, we have to rethink that. So we need to know what can be done with the hot patch machine versus which roads really need to be attended to before they deteriorate. So we need, we need Shane to, Shane and staff to upgrade the road plan so we really know what, what to project. But right now, if you, again, a little, we're a little ahead of ourselves here. But if you look at the capital improvement plan, 2022, or 2022 has 900,000, and every year after that has 400,000 in it. And I don't know what roads that addresses. We don't have any specifics on that. Yeah, in the capital improvement plan, there's a couple of other things discussed because we got some numbers that appear to be larger than they might be necessary for the projects that they're on. Which, again, will, will have some impact depending on where the money's coming from on the overall budget. But if we don't need that, or if we need to be assigning it to something else in the capital plan, so we're building up a fund so in the future, we don't have to borrow money? The idea is if, you know, I was looking at one of our previous capital plans. And in 2018, we needed to buy $30,000 worth of radio for the fire department. So the previous three years, we put $10,000 aside each year. So in 2018 came, we could buy the radios cash. And that's ideally where the capital plan works best. If you can budget for it now, rather than borrowing and paying interest and borrowing costs, start putting that in your levy now. So when the capital plan comes to fruition, you've got the cash to pay for it. So that's, that's what we've been trying to do for some period of time.
That's what Shane, Shane agreed with, the 900,000 and 400 after, years after, so that there was always money in the account, so we didn't always have to bond for it. But I don't know the breakdown of those numbers. If it was just to have money in there for the projects that he was thinking, or, but I will talk to him.
Yeah, because it looked like in the capital plan, there was another bond to get us to that 900,000. If I, I had two versions of it here, but, but anyway, you know, again, when we get to that part of, we talk about the bond. The road projects came in, one of them $50,000 lower than estimate, and the other one, I think, $100,000 lower. And when we talked to Bruce last month, he was kind of like, well, you might want to keep your, your bond up where it is and just have extra money, which you can then apply towards roads. The question is, do we want to do that after we heard Laurie last month say that whatever you bond is going to hit you hard next year? Do we want to say, if we don't really need to put an extra $150,000 in there? Or whatever that might be? Do we want to back that down before we sell those bonds? Because otherwise, we're paying interest on that. Or do we want to say, let's take our lumps now and have some reserve, but we have three years to use that reserve? And in this case, one year is last year. Year two is this year, and year three is next year. So we have to be careful that we're using, if we're, if we're borrowing money, we're using it within the prescribed timeframe. So, but that'll be, that's a discussion we need to have as well. Do we want to have the full amount that we talked about with Bruce? Or do we want to take less than that since the roads came in less than that? And what's the, what's the pros and cons on that? Because again, the more we borrow, then the more our levies will be impacted next year. Right now, the guesstimate was about 10%. Now, if we have a reasonable fund balance, like we did, you know, previously, we had significant amounts in our fund balance. So we actually use that to counter the levy increase. And that's one thing to consider. If we have a healthy fund balance and we have a huge increase because of the bond next year, you can buy some of that down out of your fund balance as long as you maintain sufficient reserves. And we've always had at least six months. So six months of our budget, because again, cities only get paid twice a year. Typically, June, July, and December. So you need to have that reserve. If there's some kind of hiccup in the system, we want to have cash so everybody gets paid. So that's the fund balance. We try and keep it, you know, 40 to 50% is healthy. And that's when we, we got up, years past, we were like 100% fund balance.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
Speaking of the road projects, have we heard of Monlau Trucking has responded to the letter? And did it get through the dogs?
Monlau Trucking, they reclaimed the road yesterday. So they, they showed up at the last minute. It's a bit of a long story, but they are working on the project right now. I got a text this morning saying, the areas that we've patched over previous years that are fully gravelled look great. The rest of them, it's nothing but field dirt. So I don't know how much gravel that's going to bring in. Similarly, we need somewhere between 50 and 70 loads of gravel down in Rogers Lake. So they're not paved yet either. They're bringing in loads of gravel to try and balance out the sand that's down there. So those, those projects are substantially to be done by Friday. We'll see. We did have a meeting on the Ebenean Garnet with Monlau. They understood the seriousness of it. The Observer that Shane has on it understands the critical nature of the road. And so Shane himself has poked his nose in there, and Handy Evans is also. And Shane's been spot checking in Rogers Lake as well.
Is that both, both projects are substantially to be done on Friday?
Yes. And the question was how, how Monlau was going to get that done? Because technically, while some equipment showed up and the start of the silt fence was there on Thursday, nothing happened before Monday. Silt fences were going up on Monday. Trees and ditches were being grubbed. And then they reclaimed yesterday. Or actually, last night. Because I got the word this morning it's reclaimed, so. So whether they'll, the question is, can they rebuild the road bed in that time? And if we have more rain on Thursday and Friday, what that'll do to it? The rain we had last week because of all the sand down in Rogers Lake actually helped. Because they reclaimed it, mixed it with sand. But now they have no base for gravel, they have to bring that in yet. So we had two road graders going in Rogers Lake. And they were hitting hot and heavy. They thought they might be blacktopping on Saturday, actually. But they need to keep gravel in first. So those, you know, those are, those are things that obviously, because those are two major road projects, we have a lot of residents that are paying really, really close attention. And will want to be paying close attention to what they're saying about it too. And that's why, you know, I asked about, you know, another $900,000 next year. And, and looking at, you know, roads we were putting off, that Shane might have been putting off, thinking we were this close to transportation on state aid funds, we may have to revisit that because I don't know if 185th, with the volume of traffic it gets, will hold up till we make 5,000. The other thing that, you know, again, we, we threw some things out at our capital improvement plan previously about things we'd like to see mostly on park-related. But one of the things that was in our previous capital plan was replacement of street signs. It's a very expensive project because there's a lot of street signs in the city. And some of them are getting cattywampus, you don't know which way they're pointing. And some of them are the old ones that don't reflect. And so there was a state mandate a few years ago that we had until a specific year to get all our street signs replaced. So we put it in our capital plan, and then the state backed off and said, well, we'll give you a little more time. So prior to Laurie joining us, that was something that was in the capital plan and hasn't been revisited. But it's, it's an expensive item that has to get back into the capital plan. We have to budget for it. Or it's possible, you know, if we can, we'd have to see if our small cities road improvement fund, if that would qualify. So if we have $90,000 in funds, and this is, I don't know if you, Mary, if you remember how expensive that was? It was tens of thousands of dollars to replace all the street signs. We were doing it in over a three-year period.
It was expensive. I believe Laurie, one time you even said that Joe was inventorying
Yes.
and replacing as needed. I don't know if any have been replaced or?
Yes, there's been several that have been replaced. And we're actually going through another phase right now of replacing stop signs. Apparently, it's something to steal right now. So we're missing a lot of stop signs throughout the city. And then some street signs too, that maybe look good in college dorms. Maybe.
It was interesting because there was a guy at the threshing show. Actually, it was Kelly's father that was selling street signs. And a lot of them from Nalda. And so people in Nalda were all buying their, their home street. And we did have a chat. He said, I got them all legal, I got the receipt here. But they were at auction, and they were in a box with all these other Noka County signs. But, yeah, they're, between dorm rooms and I'm guessing the stop signs, it's probably aluminum is maybe valuable at this point.
I'm not sure.
I would hope if somebody's bringing in stop signs, that they're, they're being questioned.
We've been replacing them pretty quickly lately.
I heard about the one down there on 190th, but it's been a rash of them?
There's been several, mm-hmm.
So the signs that Joe's replacing right now, are those ones where people are saying that they're damaged or missing, or...
No, when Joe did his inventory, he did check which ones were the most damaged or the older ones, and tried to fix, get those replaced first. But he was thinking of doing a certain portion of the city, and then going to the next portion, but he wanted to get the worst-looking ones taken care of first.
So would that be something that we can then project out as far as a capital plan, what it will take to get them all done cost-wise?
Yep.
Because that would be helpful. And then if we can check if the Small City Road Fund, if that qualifies as an expenditure? It has to be roadway or road-related?
I think it's recommended that it's for streets, but I'll check and see if that includes street signs. And then I won't be able to check in with Joe until he returns about the street sign project.
Yep.
But I can ask if Eric might know.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
Can I just, it's petty, but can I make, can I ask that when the request for the street signs goes to the printer, the administrative staff looks at it, so we don't have street signs that are not grammatically correct?
Yeah, that has been happening.
Oh, thank you. And we look at replacing those that are grammatically incorrect?
Mm-hmm.
I don't see that any other concern ever, but now that...
Well, we try to be unique.
So a lot of things, like, or else? So a lot of things you're not real...
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
On a comedic side note, I used to live on County Road 69, and our sign was perpetually missing. As soon as it would go up, it would be down. The county changed it to Road, County Road 89, and now we've never lost one since.
[laughing] I wonder why.
Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Aldrich.
So what's our plan to attack this to come to a decision? Because I feel like we talk a lot...
Okay, so what we, what you missed was the introduction to, I won't go through the whole thing, but we aren't looking at zero-based budgeting, but we're looking at realistic-based budgeting. And so what I did is looked at the numbers that Lori Edgar gave us, and she's projecting our increase off of a 2021 budget, which is 17 and 1/2% higher than we actually spent in 2021. And so I proposed to the council that we take a look at our budget increase being off the 2021 projected actual, plus 10.25%, and then incorporate the entire sheriff's contract into that budget, which, if you calculate that out, would come into almost within dollars of our current 2021 budget. So we could incorporate the sheriff and a 10 and 1/4% increase over this year's spending, and end up with a 0% increase on the levy, and still, and as we were just starting to talk about, where would that not work for Lori? As far as if we were to take a look at what we spent this year, why next year couldn't be that? And if there was something that, I mean, there are some things that we spent this year that I would challenge that we don't need to spend next year. There's other things that Lori's going to come back that we don't know about, that's saying, well, for some reason, this year we didn't spend that, but I would like to see it next year. And so, because we don't have hard numbers, I don't know, you know, the eight months of spending that we currently have, and the four months that are left, any annual budget, the city has certain things that are winter, spring-heavy, certain things that are summer, fall-heavy. And so those are things we have to ask, you know, make sure Lori points out that, yeah, even though this one, Lori and I looked at this, we projected, this is what it would be, if we get an extremely heavy snowfall, starting in October, November, this is going to be less than we projected. We also said that we've got $89,000 in small road funds, small city road funds, and we got $51,000 in LGA. And in the plan we have here, we have $15,000 contingency that's unallocated. So with the contingency, with the additional state funds, and with our projected 2021, it appeared that we could have an increase over 2021, projected actual, and still incorporate the entire sheriff's contract, so we could start January 1st. The logic, again, as explained before to the council here, was if we go to the half year, like we thought was a winner last time we talked in July, that extra $60,000 is going to hit us in 2023, along with all the increase for the bonding, which Lori said would already be up around 10%. So rather than have that hit at the same time as the bonding, absorb it this year, and minimize our increase this year, and prepare for the levy, which is also why we discussed that we got off into the levy. If we don't need all 800, or a million, $2,850,000, if we can get by with less, that's less that we have to put on the levy in 2023. And again, understanding that when you bond, you have about three years to spend that money. And because we're bonding for last year, that's year one, this year's year two, next year's year three. So it's not something we can just bank in perpetuity. It has to be spent appropriately. So if we don't need to bond for it, I just assume not. And I don't know, Lori, if you know how far Bruce is with that, I mean, he's going to be bringing something to us in September 14th, but if we were to change the amount. And he told us at the meeting, if you want to up it or lower it, this is the time to do that, so.
Yeah, we still have time to do that. We have a standard and pores meeting on Thursday, but we could meet with Bruce sooner than that, and let him know if we're making a change to it. And even at our standard and pores meeting on Thursday, we don't have to set the exact amount. We can tell them, this is what we're planning, but we can come back with a change, and just get the approval for the full amount, but not take out the full amount.
And then we would need to confirm, but like I said, my recollection, looking at the road projects, we were basing the bond on the engineer's estimate, and the one road project came in about $50,000 less, and the other one was about $100,000 less. So again, if that's something that we didn't need to bond for...
Is that knowing that we're going to need as much gravel, as you just said, when they did the reclamation and found it's all dirt?
Yeah, and I haven't heard anything on that, as far as what that cost is going to be to us. You know, that is, again, something there that Shane put the base in there. So I don't know if that's something, we get penalized because they didn't do a good job preparing that. I, that's something we need to hear from Shane, if that's going to change the budgeted amount.
Yeah, because they did core samples, right?
Yep. I'm not sure how many they did in Rogers Lake. Ebenean Garnet, they did a lot. And that one there, we knew we were going to be bringing in gravel. You know, it was one of the residents that was surprised to see all the field dirt in the road. And we knew that road. We've taken that road apart multiple times in the last 12...
They were surprised to see what?
Field dirt.
Field dirt.
Basically, when that road is built, it's in a pasture filled with springs, and the developer took dirt out and just made a road out of it. And then after the houses were built, he threw his little blacktop on it, charged the residents for it. And that didn't hold up, because there's no base. So they redid it, charged the residents again, and we've been fixing it. We've got well over $100,000 into it in the last 12 years repairing it. And where we repaired it, Joe did a fabulous job. He dug down, got the garbage dirt out of there, put in a good sand base, put in a mat, put the gravel down, and put a patch on, and the patches have held up beautifully. But it's time to put the whole road bed together, rather than just a bunch of patches. So in those areas that Joe patched, it looks good. The areas he didn't patch, we knew we would need gravel. I think the surprise is down in Ebenean Garnet, because they're going to need twice the gravel that they were told to begin with. Now, is that something that bites us? I don't know.
Mr. Mayor.
Again, we have contingency with the Small City Road Funds, which we just received half of, so.
Councilmember Greenberg.
Right, so it was built into the money that we told the residents they have to pay. There's a contingency built in there. And then there's the extra 50, that's in the bond? Is that what it is, 50,000? That you're asking, should we not?
Yeah, if there was a 100 on the one road, and I have to go back and verify that, but if we were, if the engineer's estimate was 100 high on the one, and 50 high on the other, then that would be 150 that we may not need to bond for. It has to be confirmed. Either way, if there's an overage, we've already told the residents, we're not charging you for that.
Right.
If there's an overage for gravel, that's coming out of the city funds.
Right, and it's happening right now as we speak, so we're still a little unsure if they're going to need more or less.
And I would assume Shane hasn't called you and said heads up.
No, not yet.
So if he's bringing extra gravel, I would think his first call is going to be to Lori saying, "The cost is going up." So I don't know if we're paying for that or not. I don't know if they're actually, how much they're actually bringing in. You know, I was just looking, as I was driving the road, and I could see the sand. The guy's building the road, took out a shovel and showed me how much sand was there, and he said, "We've ordered gravel." And that was supposed to be in this week, so. I, you know, I was, I haven't been down there since last week, so I don't know. But I would imagine if there's extra cost, Shane's going to be warning us that. And he's got observers on both those projects. In fact, his observer on Ebenean Garnet's been on vacation, so Shane himself is actually doing that project. So if there's extra cost, he's going to know it. So I'm counting on him to do that. But that being said, he'd have to tell us how much that is, and we do have a Small Cities Road Fund that can be used for that. And actually, we do have, if you take a look at our reserves in the road and bridge, we do have monies in our road fund there as well.
So between the contingency, the road and bridge, small roads, we might have enough to cover anything weird that's happening in Rogers Lakes and Ebenean Garnet?
I believe so.
And that is different from the 50,000 in the bond?
Yep.
Okay. Well, I'm more comfortable with that.
Again, Lori, if I'm getting wild here, shoot the flare.
No, my only red flag so far is I'm a little concerned with going to the zero-based budgeting and not using years past as examples, because we had a really odd year this year, just with two employees, you know, being, not being paid for several months. So our budget numbers are really different this year, so they're a lot lower, and I'm just...
And I, you know, as I went through this and highlighted, I left those two out for that reason.
Okay.
You know, with the one in the office, we did cover some of that by increasing hours. It wasn't a one-to-one match.
Right.
But I left that out. The difference there is, in last year's budget, we had put in that potential for a full-time position at $67,000.
Right.
And by not utilizing that, it artificially put us higher, even though we had the absenteeism there to counter it. It put us artificially higher, and then when Lori is basing off the budgeted rather than the actual, we're looking at still 40-some thousand dollars difference. So in the other one, in the public works, I didn't touch that, because the assumption is, even though we brought in a few people at a lower end to try and do some of it, it wasn't covering for what we're not paying.
Correct.
And so the assumption there is that one is artificially low, and so I would not have touched that one.
Okay, yeah, I just need to see which ones you're thinking, and then I can say, "Yeah, that makes sense to me," or "It might make perfect sense."
Yeah, so, and again, you know, we can go through some of those, and I, you know, it's really going to, the council can weigh in on it. What we have here is, we have two years actual and a projected actual, and a proposed. I also have, if anybody wants to see it, I go back to 2010, so I have a, what I've tried to do is always have a five-year running average, and so I take the last five years and average out in a category, so that if we had a flyer, high or low one year, you know, it evens out over a five-year period. And I've actually gone five and 10 years with budgets in these categories. So I agree that we want to take a look at historically, and that's why I'm saying that if you see something, it's like, "Well, no, that's just crazy." So if we want to, the other thing is, is again, I'm not sure on some of these, because last time we talked, we talked about category maintenance and contract services. Sometimes that's training, or sometimes that's actually contract and maintenance and contract services. So some of these, I don't have the subset on that. And when I'm looking at my receipts, you know, we used to have a category on there for right-of-way permits. And I'm assuming if we're going to be looking at additional gas installation in the northern part of the city, if we're going to be looking at a lot of internet, there's probably going to be right-of-way permitting going on. You know, so there might be additional receipts that are in here, but we don't know it, and that, I'm not even dealing with the receipt part of it yet. I'm just dealing with the expenditure. So, you know, if I went through quickly, so I'm, again, on the August 31st...
What page?
And I'm on page eight. All right, so, again, we just talked about the office and administration. That's one where Lori's going to have to take a look, that, you know, what did a person's absence, another person covering for them, and the $67,000 we put in there as a placeholder out of that? But right now, between projected 2021 actual and the 2022 budget is $41,525. Between the 2021 budget is $75,000. So if we take a look at, part of that $75,000 is going to be that $67,000 we put in last year. Part of that is going to be somebody's absence throughout the year. So that one there, we're going to have to, we're going to have to look at more closely. And I didn't have those numbers, as far as how much, you know, Lisa filling in countered the, you know, Ellen being gone.
Let's make sure we don't use names, and we shouldn't discuss that.
Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Greenberg.
Before we go down this road, I just want to ask Councilmember Rainville a question. So, Mary, have you had, so the mayor chaired some of his vision and adjustments with what he saw how the budget should be moving forward. What was your, did you have anything different? Did you have some areas that you wanted to discuss? Were there areas that you thought needed adjustments?
Okay, Councilmember Greenberg, I've never, in the last couple of years that we've done the budgeting, I'm not comfortable with what we're provided. Going back to what the mayor has, what we used to receive was much more detail, and we could tell in categories where we were over, where we were under. And when I look at these categories, I don't know what they mean, what's included in them. So it's difficult for me to say. I do have concerns, I mean, like elections. We're going up, we've got $13,475... We're going up, we've got 13,475 dollars in elections for a year that's only a statewide, we don't do school boards here, so it's just a statewide candidate, the governor and the house and senate. And we're budgeting more than what we had for 2020 actual, which was a presidential election, a highly contested presidential election. So I don't know what the difference in material and supplies are going to be, are. I don't know what the difference in printing is, contract services. I don't know what that additional cost is from 1,300 to 2,200. In financing and assessing, we've increased $1,000 in our accounting. I thought the purpose of having somebody in to help with that, that we were weaning ourselves off of that, not increasing what we're paying. I'm wondering who's doing our audit, if that's, I don't know if that's Mike again this year?
We stated at the last meeting that we were going to go out for RFP and then we would bring that back to council.
Okay. Where are we in that process?
We are working on that process right now.
All right, thank you. It used to be you could go to the county and the county would do your audits for you and they were reasonably priced and then the private auditing company said, no, we want part of that pie. And I don't know how the differences shook out. I like the thought of putting the whole sheriff's contract into 2022 and not having that extra into 2023 budget. I think that makes sense. I like having, if we can take 150,000 out of that bond, that would be great. That would help prevent the pricing increase in 2023. And again, as I've said in the past, is that just because it's here isn't a given. That there are things that still have to have council approval for expenditures and that that's still in people's mind. I question the street improvement. What are we doing for 900,000 in 2022? Yeah, 2022. I don't have anything in front of me that tells me what that 900,000 is going to be. And you can say, well, if we only spend 450, we only spend 450, but we're charging the taxpayers on 900,000. So the lack of substance in some of it is what bothers me.
So can I just say, if you need more information, you just need to ask and I can provide that. I don't know until I hear now that for the past several years you haven't been happy. I didn't know that.
And I understand that. There are times, people will say I'm free to, that I speak what I feel. There are times I don't because I know that I can be in the minority and it's not worth the hassle over it. But I was always more comfortable with our previous budgets and how we worked them.
You know, and I think we kind of got off on that, maybe the wrong foot when, the accounting help that we brought in, that first year we said, well, this is what we're used to. I mean, we're used to this, we're used to the interim report to current. So we're sitting down with an interim report says, August 31st here's everything we've spent, that's clear. Here's the approved budget going back five years and here's the various categories. So if we had a question saying, you know, we've put 7,000 in this account and five years later we've never spent it. Why do we keep doing that? You know, some of those types of things. And when it first came up, there was significant pushback and if you remember that, because we had a lot of questions because this was totally different than what we were accustomed to, at least Dan and Mary and I at that time. And that was upsetting. It was like, we don't want to lose the help, let's get through this this year. And what's happening is, we're kind of going into, away from this and here, we haven't had that discussion saying, this has been more helpful because we understand it better and we can work better together on it. Because right now, as I said, some of these categories seem to have multiple definitions. You know, this one includes primarily training, where this one's actually, you know, the maintenance and contract, I think is the one I'm thinking in particular. But as I look down on revenue side, this entire page is all revenue down to here. And so I look on here and I've got revenue, I've got five items. So I, some of those may be mixed in with those others, some of those, like I don't know if right-of-way permits is in permits. I don't know if that's just building permits or some of those things. And so it's been, this summer in particular, it's been a bit discombobulated just because we're trying to get this done and there were major events that we couldn't meet on a regular basis to do this, so.
Well, we did change our financial software when I first came on, so your reports look very different too. So the reports that we're giving you, if they're not the more detailed reports, you just need to let us know so that I can run any report you need. I think that we're also working with somebody who's been with the city of Anoka for 30 years and she's, they've always just trusted her to do the budget, they don't ask for all the details. So for her to come here, it was very probably not normal for her that all this detail needs to be put out when she's providing the budget. So there's probably that going on too.
Yeah, and I think that's what I started looking at after we got the last one that she had put out and then when I, you know, confirmed with the packet that I picked up for this meeting. That's when I started looking at, if we're simply looking at a 2021 budget versus the 2021 projected actual, we're 278,000 under budget. And we're building our 2022 budget based on that inflated 2021 budget. And if we do that a series of years, if that's the pattern, then we get comfortable with 5% to 10% levy increases and I'm not comfortable with that. I mean, we've always tried to, without shortchanging the residents, keep it as close to zero as we could by being efficient in what we did or grow it in such a way that it wasn't showing up as 10% increases.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
So do you have access Lori to the software that was used to generate all this? Do you have the digital versions of this budget? Has Lori given it to you and said, I did the budget, now this is yours?
Yes, I have them on my computer, yes.
Okay, so here's my question. If we decide to go down the mayor's path and edit, I'm going to guess 15 categories, and it's highlighted for you to change 25,000 down to 16,500 every single place, could you go into that software, make those changes yourself and we wouldn't have to get Lori Yeager back involved?
I could make the changes. I'm not sure that, I would have to know what categories everything is in because it all ties together into formulas. So that changes everything. So if the, if I know the correct items that we're changing, I can easily enter, it's just data entry, you just plug it in and I just don't know the formulas if they're going to depend.
Sure, because everything might be live and hot, so if you're changing one number, just like...
It will change, yes. So if I'm going to make changes, I would want to have Lori's assistance because it is her spreadsheet. So I can certainly go in and do it and then have her verify that it hit all the right boxes and then our total at the end came out where it's supposed to be. I would want her eyes on it.
Has she been slowly training you in on the process of how we're doing it and things like that?
Yes.
Okay.
So, in understanding we switched to Banyan, I would assume there's a similar supporting documentation we had before. It's not going to look just like this, but something that says, here's what makes up these categories.
Correct. If you show me what report you had from the CTAS program, I can certainly go in. There's hundreds of reports that I can run in Banyan and I'll find one that's similar.
So one of the things is, we have to decide what we want to get done tonight. But just, you know, if we're really potentially going back and saying, here's the categories we want to relook at, how close can we get to the 2021 projected actual with a 10.25 or 10.5 whatever percent increase, 10% increase plus or minus, and the entire sheriff's contract in there? How does this work? And then we need to give you time to say, hold it, red flag, this one is just an oddball. You can't do that here. These others, yeah, this year was normal enough that with a 10% increase, I can live with that. We'll still match last year, we don't have to do the big increase. But that would give you a chance to take a look at what we've had before, see if it's a reasonable thing to print something like that out. Give you a chance to go through the targeted areas and say, yeah, I think that would work. And then you can come back and saying, here's where I recommend that not working. And then if we have to go up a little bit, we've got to go up a little bit. But if we can do that, because we really haven't even got into the capital improvement plan as part of this. But if we can do that for the council, and again, nobody wants more meetings, but our intention was next Tuesday to have another meeting to try and finalize this, which may be a challenge because Labor Day is on Monday and you aren't scheduled to work on Friday. So this could be a difficult challenge to have by next Tuesday. The following Tuesday is the 14th is our September council meeting and we'd hope to have a final approval. This has to be finalized by the council and sent to the county by September 30th. Is that still the date this year? So we do have the month of September to get this right. And we can go in high and lower it, which no city ever, most cities don't do. But you just can't, if you come in too low, you can't go and raise it after the 30th. So if we want to err on the side of caution, we go in a little higher by the end of the month and then we can tweak it if we want to and come down. With the idea that we're trying to be alert on the anticipated bump in 2023 based on our bond issue. And it's also going to take a little time to confirm those road numbers to see if the bond issue's right. And for what it's worth, you know, last year we thought we had 200,000 for a truck and the truck at that time turned out to be closer to 270,000. Who knows with the price of steel and the price of everything else right now, that 270 is going to be enough. So I think we need to kind of look at those numbers again and make sure we aren't shorting ourselves again. Or do we have enough, because we've been putting some into the equipment fund, maybe we have a fudge factor there too because if I'm looking at it, we're still putting in 72.5 into the equipment fund every year and 25,000 into the capital fund as part of this budget. I read that right? So, you know, there would be some money, I just don't want to say this year we put 270, it's going to come in at 350 and not be prepared for it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
So how do you want to tack tonight? Leave the capital improvement plan alone and just work on other aspects? Or try and work that in tonight? Or what do you think should be the strategy for tonight?
The capital plan, Lori, correct me if I'm wrong. Right now, the only transfers we're making to support the capital plan are that 72.5 and the 25,000. Is that correct? Other than the proceeds from the bond. But right now, our current budget doesn't have us funding the capital plan. The park plan, I believe, was coming out of the park fund. So the rest of the capital plan, yes, we could delay that because we haven't really settled on what the long-term capital plan is. We don't know, we don't know what the road plan really is for next year. And what we do have in our budget, built into our budget, a transfer of 72.5 to road equipment and 25,000 into capital. Those have been built in. We also built in 7,500 for turnout gear. Looking at the fire department budget, between turnout gear and radios, it looks like, turnout gears every year, you're building up 7,500 and 10,000 for radios. But those are again built into the numbers, I believe, we got from the fire departments.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
So, Miss, right, I'm trying to think of, this was on the previous type of reports we got. So in 2019, we transferred in 82.5 into the equipment replacement fund. 2020, we brought in 62.5, we were going to do 72.5 this year, 72.5 last year. Of those funds, what have we, if we've not expended those funds, what is our real true current balance in our equipment fund?
Isn't that something I can run a report on? I don't have that in front of me, but I can certainly run that.
That would have been on, that should have been on our last council meeting because we get that financial report, it says what's in each fund.
Okay, I'll go back and look.
Yeah, I'm working on month end right now, so I can give you, I mean, tomorrow I'll know the exact number where we're at. As of tomorrow.
Because even like for this building, we've put money aside over the years to do this building, but we've not done anything with that money. So I'm just wondering how much do we have in that part?
In the capital plan, you know, typically it should show you on the account what's currently there. So it shows you what, this one doesn't show it, but it should show you what, this is what's planned to be there. I was looking at the fire one and it kind of tabulates and says, here's the intended purchase and if we spread that out over six years, here's when it's complete. And so you have a rolling total, but you should be able to, our plan should show you what's currently in the account and what's projected to be in the account each year. And you can see on our transfers in in 2021, we did 35,000 in the capital. We reduced that to 25,000 in the capital improvement plan in years 22 through 27. Again, that may or may not be reasonable because we don't know what we're setting it aside. But that's a discussion once we get in there because as we look at, you know, what are the improvements in the recycling center? Again, I had a question on that from revenue side, are they, you know, but when we do that, if we're getting grants, it should go back to, our capital plan says this. And so if there is a county grant that says we can use this for capital improvements or facility improvements, we have a fund that we've been building up. If they say it has to be done this year, then we have a project ready to go to do it.
Mr. Mayor.
And that's one of the things we fail on in the past because when they showed up with money at the end of the year, it's not as common, but it used to be they'd all of a sudden have extra money and they'd say, everybody's got a project, here's some money. If you were shovel-ready, say you got the money. Councilmember Rainville.
I did reach out to Sudal today, who then also spoke with Lori from the county on the recycling. on the recycling, we have budgeted here $31,000 for intergovernmental revenues, and per Sue, our grant fund should be about $50,000.
But that's only because, so we get the 31,000, but then we apply for the grant, which is the additional 20,000. So that's only if we apply for it, we did apply for it, and it has to be used for that specific project only.
Right, right, and that's part of being that shovel-ready, that, that we know what it is we want to do there.
So what was, so in the grant, what was the project?
The project is for a, a shelter or a office for the recycling attendant, so there's heat and air conditioning, because right now, when it's 90 degrees in there, he's in there, and it's going to be cold pretty soon. And that was something we discussed at council meeting.
So that, do, do we have an anticipated cost to a structure like that?
Yep, I had to provide all of that, so when you, when you apply for the grant, you have to provide information to what your plan is, and then they decide if they're going to fund it or not. So we do have some ideas, we haven't committed to anything, because we don't, until today, I didn't know if we were approved for the grant, and Sue said that we more than likely will be getting that, yeah.
Okay, so that's, that'll be the extra 20, so our, our projected intergovernmental will be 51, with 20 of it being designated to the structure?
Yep, we have to use it for that purpose.
Yeah, I, I, so anytime we put in a grant before, it has to be for that purpose. But that's where, you know, again, I don't want to get into it all tonight, but as, as, you know, as I was looking at the things we discussed at there, what else will we want to do? If we're going to keep the recycling center open, how do we improve it in a way that makes it better for the attendant, better for the users, you know, better return on our, our recycled materials? We have a baler sitting in this building right here, right now, that potentially could be used up there, we have a baler up there that maybe should be replaced. In the past, we got the grant for the plastics baler, and, and the building that houses that. So I understand the project-specific grants, but we also need to take a look at, if we're going to do capital improvements there, what's our list of priorities? And I'd, I'd love to see that building and the fire department get new LED lights and get rid of those energy hogs that they have currently. I think half, quarter of the lights in the fire station are not even working, so. But those types of things, we would want to put on here and say, okay, over how many years? And then, if we have something like that, and the grant process comes up for this next year, we can say, here's a project, it's ready to go, we're either going to fund it ourselves over a period of years, or we're going to apply for a grant and get it done Because any of these things on a capital plan can be moved up if resources are available. So that one will, will move back towards a, consistent with the 2021 projected. And there, you know, there again, I don't know if we can tell yet, after the, the months that Kelly's been with us, but I would anticipate we're getting few, much fewer items dropped off that aren't paid for.
That's correct.
And so, that should affect the revenue side to the receipt side, if people are still dropping off at the same quantities they were before. Now, that being said, I have no idea if there's any market right now for cardboard, or plastic, or aluminum, or if we're getting any return other than covering our hauling cost.
I think it's just covering the hauling like that.
With, and with Kelly there, does that require less of the additional public work staff then?
Yes.
Which is what we're hoping, is that.
Absolutely.
If he's staying on top of things, other people shouldn't have to be going in there on extended periods of time. So, so I would think that, that, you know, right now, we have a, you know, better than a 15% increase between projected and budget, and that'd be one where we can probably, I had, I did have one question on that, since we're on the recycling. On the 2021 projected, there's a capital outlay buildings and structures, 19,000, is, is that the grant for the office, or what is that?
That might be, what page are you on?
I'm on page 17.
Yeah, that might have gotten added in there, in my discussions with Lori. Yes.
Because, because mine is that, you know, that puts us at a projected 57,678, where it's, without that, it's actually 38,000 projected for expenditures. See, that's, that's the type of thing, so if, short of the grant, if we're only looking at 38,000 in expenditures, and the grant is dedicated, that puts a more realistic, you know, assumption on, on these numbers, that maybe the 2021 projected plus 10% is realistic going into 2022. And that's, and that's what I did, I just went through each page saying, okay, is there something I'm missing? Because I'm looking at what we budgeted for 2021 versus what realistically we think will happen, and, you know, that one there was, you know, between what we budgeted for 2022, that's a 68% increase, and that's probably not necessary. Again, in parks, we had a 68% increase.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rayburn.
I have a question, Ms. Strike, so the, the email that, that Sudal sent out today, talked about one of the changes in the funding from the county, is that they're using a staffing metric to determine the amount of funds each committee can use for funding. The total amount available to your community for staffing is, I'm going to round it at So of that salary and benefits, half of that would be covered, correct?
So I didn't see her email.
Oh, okay, I thought, oh, it was covered, okay.
I'm sure I got it, but I did not see emails today at all, I was the only one in the office, so. But the new structure is based on a point system, so we can't enter in, we used to be able to enter in, if Joe had hours there, we would give the hours that he worked there, what his salary is and wages, and, you know, anytime Ellen had, had worked on the recycling center, we used to be able to give all that to the county, now it's a point system. So they take these points, and it doesn't make a lot of sense, and I talked to Sue about this today, and she said, based on your points, you only get this much. So we can't even tell her, but this is how much we pay the recycling attendant. So I want to meet with her at another time and say, let's talk about this new point system, because how do we maximize our points then, what can we do? She said, right now, there's nothing we can really do to change that, because of the size of our city, and our employees, and so you get points for different things, and so we have to try and get creative, and that's going to take some time to work with Sue.
But, but, but $7,800 though is, I mean, that's, if we're budgeting, and I don't know if this salary and benefits is just the existing part-time person, or is it also public works, the other public work staff?
That one, I think, was a little bit of the public work staff at the time too. So we didn't have a, a definite amount at this time, because we didn't know what the hours were going to be.
So we know what, what the attendants make, you know, working 24 hours a week, so we could project quickly.
Yes, in the future, we can.
I'm saying, and, and, you know, I've, I've been through this with the county before, when they changed the grant program, and when we, when we put the addition on that building, so we could take more product, and other cities that weren't doing what we were doing, said, that's not fair, that we're getting all the money we were, but there are only three of us in the county that were doing everything we were doing, and the bigger cities wanted a piece of that, so they changed the structure, changed the deadlines, and I, I would think this point system is similar. I would speculate that if their true goal is to get things recycled, we are a regional recycling center.
And we get points for that, yeah.
And then, so they, they definitely need to put that, because we're doing more of what our recycling than most cities are, and I don't know how they can be getting more points, if they're not doing everything we're doing, especially regionally, because I would say cardboard, we're, we're pulling all over the place.
The points are only based on salaries, that's a new thing this year, and I'm not sure why they went with a point system, but that's something that we'll discuss.
Okay.
Because we're just getting our numbers now, so we do all the reporting, turn it into the county or to Sue, and then she reviews our applications and our reports and everything that's required of us, and then tells us how much we're going to get. And today, she told me over the phone that we were going to get the 7,000 and something based on our points. So that's when I said, I'd like to sit down with you at another time, when we have more time, and discuss how we can work on these points, and what we can do to, to really utilize those.
So in, in the budget that we have listed here, we have the $20,000 grant, which is dedicated. And Mary, what did you say that, was there another, was this 31,000 separate from the points, or?
The 31,000 is what we get from the county, based on reporting. We give them all of our hauling and our, what we take in, what we spend, and then they give us 30, that's what's allocated for the city of now then, 31,000, if we meet all the requirements, which we always do, and that's hosting two events, and, you know, there's that whole contract that we have to follow. So then we get the 31,000. Now, if we say, well, we want to make an improvement over there, so we're also going to apply for the grant, then that's a separate thing, and we won't get that if we don't apply for it.
Yep, and is the 78, the 7,000 whatever, in addition to the 31?
That is included in that, so I think if we had, I think, I don't know that for sure, because the point system is all new, but I think if we were able to get our points higher, we might get more than 31,000. But I don't, I have to clarify that was.
It'd be nice if they stuck the, the attendant or the labor on top of the, because right now, the formula is for everything we take in and haul.
Yep, without an attendant, but we were using public work staff at that time, so now we're not.
So that was factoring in.
So we were factoring in the wages before, but now we have a dedicated person, and I think that would give you more points, but I don't know that. She was very excited about it, so we'll see.
So, so there was a, a misconception prior to you coming, that I took up with the county, because we, we said we really need to make sure people are paying their own way. One of the reasons we have Kelly there is so that, best we can, nobody's dropping anything off without paying for it. And, and previously, we were told, don't worry about that, the county covers it, and in fact, the more people pay, the less we get from the county, which the county had a conniption fit over when they heard that, that absolutely not, we want you to get everything paid for you can. It happened to be with the, the assistant county attorney in the meeting at that time, and, and Sue said, yeah, we've always told them that, I mean, if you don't get paid for it, then your, your numbers are going to go up here. The more you get paid for it, you're driving your numbers down here, so don't get paid for it. And, and they were supposed to fix that. We're not supposed to get penalized for actually having people cover the cost of hauling. And so, hopefully, we, we haven't reduced our number by bringing in dedicated staff, getting people to actually pay our hauling cost, and hopefully breaking even on, between hauling and what you get reimbursed for.
It makes us more, shine brighter to work with for the county, they would rather work with a city that's trying to do the right thing, rather than saying, well, they'll just cover us anyways. So, there's something to be said about that too, our community pride.
Well, what happened is, is every time we try and say we need to make sure people are paying their way, it was like, don't worry about it, it hurts us. And I said, well, so I'm, I'm glad that, you know, that we made the move with, with staffing it, and, and hopefully, we can get to a point where they can pay on the spot and not have to burden office, or make people go their only when office is open, I mean, if they can come when the recycling's open, pay it all in one spot, that'll be a, a benefit.
At this point, there's no place for transactions to take place, there's not a, it's out in the wide open, I just think it would be better to wait until there's some sort of an office.
Yep, the guard check will help that. Yep, understood, I just, that'll, that'll be a nice improvement.
But I think that I would be open to that, now that we've had a certain staff member working and doing a, a great job, and trustworthy and helpful.
Good.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rayburn.
To, to Ms. Strike, so the, the cutted card system you have in the office.
After my chat, we're just going to go into lunch, you know, we're just going to.
That's fine, that's fine.
Details. It can only be used in the office.
Okay.
We're just thinking of squares, we could get that.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Alders.
So if we go back to page eight on the expenditures, and start rolling through that, so we can give Lori some more input on where we wanted to follow up, because if we look at the expenditures from projected to budget 21 to budget 22, that's where you come up with the $278,000. If we roll through that from page eight, nine.
No, actually, projected actual 2021 to budget 2022 is 328,742.
Yeah, look at.
Projected actual 2021 to budgeted 2021 is 278.
Yeah, so that's, and then we tack on another, whatever it is, 95,000 to that, right? So, we're trying to figure out if we can cover the 278, or where we're low, and what we can add in there, and I'm, I just want to go through and make sure we're good on where the changes are, and what the significance is, and if we can explain that or not, or if that's where we need some more detail, because, I guess, I don't know if I need the detail, if it's been the same for the last two or three years, and, or if it's a thousand bucks, but there's some that are pretty significant. So, if we look at page eight, expenditures, mayor, council, projected is 29,548, budget is 31,570, are we comfortable with that going up $2,000, and do we understand why?
I think that went up because of the maintenance and contract services, and we put training in there, which hadn't been in there before.
Training, that's an awesome thing.
Okay, so it feels like that one is, people are comfortable with.
Yep.
If we look at office admin, projected is 200, 2022 budget is 231, salaries and benefits are the most significant difference between projected and budget, and we think it's been an odd year, because we've had some team members out on, for various reasons, so are we going?
Well, and, and, and the, last year, we, we put a placeholder in for a full-time position, it didn't get filled.
Okay.
So there's 67,000, the, the $70,000 difference there, most of that's 67.
Totally understand that, so if I just look at the difference between 180 and 221, because we know what we have going forward in '22, and we know where we're projected for '21, so are we comfortable with 231 versus 200, or do we want some more understanding of what's going on there?
I would like to see more understanding of what's going on.
So what specifically do we want Lori to look at? Do we want her to look at, it looks like supplies for 2021 is projected at 17.7, and we're going down 9,000 bucks? Or, I mean, 11,000 bucks? Salaries are up, what is that, 40,000?
Yeah, 41.5.
And then the rest of it, there's some miscellaneous stuff that kind of all add up to the 2,600, so do we want her to focus on the, do we think salaries for 2022 are going to be 22, 222, or are they going to be 180? Is that what we want?
That's what we want her to look at.
That's what we want to know.
Based on the. Based on the schedule that was run this year, what's next year look like?
Okay.
And that buffer we put in there, sixty seven thousand, that wasn't utilized.
So Lori, for office admin, we want to understand if it's two twenty one or one eighty. If I go down to elections, Mary talked about this one. Twenty twenty, we spent eleven, twenty twenty two, we spent thirteen. You know, this is like totally gray to me, new to me. So it's presidential election versus state election, right? So do we think?
The off-year elections are significantly fewer.
So do we wanna put a plug in there of X, Y, Z? Because I'm trying to, trying to understand on what we think this should be in an off-year. Do we think the salaries and benefits are gonna be significantly less because there's less people at the polls and there's less hours covered? Or is it the same hours, there's just gonna be less people coming through, but we gotta staff it the same?
It would be the same people, possibly less hours. But I don't know the difference between a primary, when there's a presidential election, it's really the same people are there working as the election next year will have the same people there working.
Yeah, I mean.
But it might be not as many hours.
So it, I mean, it's, it's, it's about, I'm just rounding up here. It's about two thousand bucks, right, or twenty five hundred bucks difference? So is the ask to just put it at eleven oh ninety three and be a zero sum over twenty twenty?
Yeah, in my notes, I just said, what about ten K? Because I'm looking at, there should be fewer hours. I don't know why materials and supplies, again, presidential election is generally much more significant. We went up five hundred dollars, four hundred dollars there. And we went up nine hundred dollars in maintenance and contract services.
So I feel like this one's just gonna be a plug that we put in, right? Because there's not a lot of data that we're, so.
I just recommended ten.
So we wanna put in ten grand there. All right, if I move to page nine and if I continue on in expenditures, finance and assessing, twenty twenty two budgets fifty one, one fifty, or projecting forty six, one thirty one. So it's five grand different.
So my question, and it'd come up before, is, is one thing we did is we added eleven hundred dollars for accounting. My question is, do we still need to have fifteen, five for accounting? Or are we ready to, to move on from fifteen thousand dollars worth of accounting each year?
I think that Ms. Jaeger put in the additional eleven hundred based off of this year with all the bonding that we've been doing and the additional work that way. So she's saying, if we're doing that again next year, I've added more hours and my bills have become more. So she just wants to cover the bases. So I think that's the only reason it's been brought up there.
My question is, do we still need her services to, certainly to fifteen, five?
Not to this degree, no.
So I would say that's one where there could be a significant reduction.
And if we go back to, you know, this is your history, not mine. So nineteen and twenty is seventy three and fifty two, so twenty twenty two is less than both of those years. And it looks like, it looks like nineteen and twenty.
Nineteen, we had a, an outside firm come in.
Yeah.
And.
So that was super expensive.
Yeah.
So, but the audits is like the big difference between, if I look at twenty two and twenty one projected, thirty eight hundred versus ninety six hundred. So the whole difference is in this audit. So do we think the audit is gonna cost ninety six hundred or thirty eight hundred?
Well, the audit, we, our current auditor audits all year long and then we pay for that. So what Lori is saying, and this is what's, we won't be paying for an auditor this year because regardless of who we go with, whether it's our current auditor or a new one, they will audit the books at the beginning of the next year. So we won't have any auditing bills this year. So that's why it's significantly lower in twenty twenty one. But then in twenty twenty two, whoever our auditor is, will audit the twenty twenty one books after we close them.
So twenty twenty two is gonna be an audit year?
Yeah, so twenty twenty two will be, most auditors charge about that amount.
Okay, so there's rationale for the ninety six hundred. We think there's rationale for the professional services for the assessing. We think the fifteen, five is high or we're good with that number?
I think it's high.
Lori? So is the action for Lori to figure out between twenty twenty one projected and twenty twenty two budget based on what we think is gonna change next year, what should be in there?
I'm sorry, are we back on, up on accounting again?
Yeah, on the accounting, because we think the, we think the audit is right, we think the assessing right, but we think the accounting piece is high, right?
Right.
So is the action, action item kinda number, is that number two for Lori? Is figure out what we think accounting should be in twenty twenty two?
Yeah.
Like half that charge, seven grand or more, like ten grand?
I'd have to look and see, based on, it's the larger projects that I like to converse with Lori on now. So in the beginning, it was everything, learning everything.
Yeah.
And we're not at that point anymore.
Good, so.
So I can review.
I'd say your action item is, let's give her the action item and let her make her recommendation. Next one on legal.
I have a question.
Yep.
Were we, in our, one of our last meetings, you talked about the assesses. Were you ever able to find the contract?
Oh, no, I could not find a contract anywhere.
Okay, I'm just looking through my stuff.
And I can contact them. Like I said, that was gonna be like a last resort. But I will certainly, I'd be happy to contact them and ask for a copy of our contract.
Who's them?
Our, we have a contractor we go through. It's not, we used to go through the county and now we have two individuals that do the city assessing, Mary Wells and Eric Skoquist. And they should have a copy of our contract.
Because, yeah, the question is, why, why is it going up to, from twenty three to twenty seven, seven?
Unless they have it in their contract that there's a gradual increase.
It's down from twenty one, though.
Twenty six.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's seventeen hundred bucks, but it's seventeen hundred bucks. So on the legal piece, twenty one, twenty twenty one projected's eighty four, seven. We're going down to seventy two, five?
This is the attorney piece, right?
Prosecuting attorney, civil attorney. Both of them are prosecuting is slightly up, civil is down like, I'm gonna say fourteen grand.
And we just got notice that his rates are going up?
Yeah.
So are we good with seventy two, five? Or is that another action item that we want Lori to review? If I go back a couple of years, forty nine feels like a big jump over twenty twenty and a bigger jump over nineteen. So we're more than doubled from nineteen to twenty one.
Yeah, you're dealing with the fire contract primarily.
So if we think that is behind us, is thirty five reasonable, more in line with twenty twenty?
Depends on what those rates are.
When do we find that out?
You just sent out the notice.
I sent over, yeah, I sent it over.
So do we look at twenty twenty hours times the new rate for twenty twenty two budget?
Probably twenty nineteen hours, because twenty twenty is when we started in with the fire.
So maybe average twenty nineteen and twenty twenty?
Yeah.
So Lori, action item number three, average nineteen and twenty hours for the civil attorney and take it times the new rate? Okay, this next one is general government buildings. It looks like a hundred and twenty nine thousand is the budget for twenty twenty two. And twenty twenty one projected is one ten, so that's nineteen thousand dollar increase. And I'm showing about eleven thousand on printing utilities and professional services, which I don't know what that is. And the other one is like seven grand on maintenance and contract.
So the printing utilities and professional services used to be in the administrative area and we moved it down to general government. That's newsletter, printing, communication.
Okay. So we think.
Did we do that last year?
Move that?
Yeah.
Yeah, we tried to, but it kept getting coded to the.
Because our twenty twenty one budget was eighty nine, five, projected is eighty eight, eighty nine. And then we added ten thousand on it.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, if you look back at.
Twenty twenty.
On page eight, that fifty nine hundred dollars is under the materials and printing utilities and professional services under office administration.
Mm-hmm.
That's where that came from. So it's not new money.
No, it just got moved to the correct place.
Oh.
So that's about six thousand.
So we should be good with it going up to six thousand. It's the other eleven.
Thirteen.
Thirteen thousand that were, so if we think, so that gets into maintenance and contract services is?
So that's our property insurance and that went up.
Okay.
Dues, memberships, training for public works got moved into that category. And then workman's comp and that now includes the fire department.
So that's all in there?
Yes.
So we think this one might be pretty realistic. So no action there. Okay, next one is planning and zoning. That's down slightly over twenty twenty one projected. I would say it's, it's within two thousand dollars. I'm saying that's probably with reasonable.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
To Ms. Strike, why do we not have, or is it somewhere else? The, the meeting per diem for the PNC committee members? Where is that, if it's not reflected under planning and zoning benefits, where is that reflected?
You know, I do not know. I haven't even thought of that. But I have not seen it anywhere either. And I should, that should have plagued me when we were doing the salary information. I only, they only get paid once a year, so I didn't. But I gotta make sure they get paid.
Is that true, Jason?
It was, yes.
Two dollars and.
I love it.
Sorry, I didn't mean to sound like.
No, no, that's good, that's good. That's a good catch, Mary. So that's a, that's a follow-up. So sixty one thousand, we're good with. The follow-up is where does the P and Z salaries come out of? Next one is engineering. It looks like it's basically the same if I look at twenty twenty one projected versus twenty twenty two budget, which is over the twenty twenty one budget, but it looks like it has been the last three years prior to that, so.
There was, there was a note that Lori had put on there. Increase in use for general fund, what does that mean? Typically, we engage engineer on project specific. And so she's got an increase in five thousand dollars in use for general fund. What, what would that mean?
Probably, I don't know. He does right away permits, but that would be covered under permits. I'm gonna have to look and see what we're quoting to that.
Okay. So are we good with the dollar amount?
I think so. You know, I guess, why did we go up? I'd like to know why we went up five thousand dollars for general fund. There's probably some reason, but.
Yeah, but I just look at.
But again, if we can, if we can save five thousand.
Yeah, I totally agree. I just look back nineteen, twenty and twenty one and it's.
It might be the MS four.
I was gonna say, is it the SWIP?
That might be what it is.
Okay.
I'll check.
Okay.
This next one is the sheriff's contract. So we want this to, this is not the dollar amount that we think it needs to be, correct?
It would be three seventy three, nine eighty five.
Three seventy three, nine eighty five and not three thirteen. So that reflects the extended service hours that we're gonna get.
Potentially, yes.
Correct. So we wanna throw three seventy three, nine eighty three in there?
Is that meeting going to be rescheduled?
We're waiting to hear from the sheriff. We were told it will be. If the sheriff's not able to make it, once we've decided what we wanna do, then we'll just schedule it with Commander Heath.
But for budgeting, we probably wanna budget what we.
Yeah, we wanna see what the number looks like if we start January.
Yeah, because we don't.
Right now, they're anticipating we're starting July, so.
Okay.
Old Grove took the middle ground and started in April, so there's options.
So if I flip to page ten, now we're on fire management. So this one's gonna be a little interesting because twenty twenty one projected is one seventy, twenty twenty two budget is two seventy six. And I think it's like half year versus full year of salary and benefits is in there. So is there a follow-up on this or are we good with, comfortable with two seventy six?
I think the budget number that actually went in there was probably two eighty two.
Two eighty two? So two seventy six should be two eighty two? And so Lori's, they actually had to figure out why it's two eighty two versus two seventy six? Building inspections, budget versus actual, twenty twenty one projected is ninety four, twenty twenty two budget's a hundred. So we're six grand more. And it's all under printing utilities and professional services. So I'm assuming that's somebody actually doing the inspection services, so.
So is that, you know, again, this is one of those that, this is passed through. So if he's doing inspection services, they're paying for it, so it'll be a revenue stream on the other side of this?
Right, so if you see like twenty twenty one budgeted is ninety eight thousand, the city gets about ninety one, five fifty. We're getting almost the whole amount, if not the whole amount.
So this is a good guy for us, realistically? Okay. So we're good leaving this at a hundred?
Do we think?
And that only went up because we know that there's more houses being built.
Exactly.
And that should, that also go up on the revenue side.
Yep, exactly. So the next one, I guess I have some questions on, because this is probably one of the more significant changes, right? Public works salary and benefits, materials and supplies. So salary and benefits went up forty here. Materials and supplies went up, I'm gonna say sixty, twenty five, twenty six thousand. And then maintenance and contract went up, I'm gonna say about seventeen thousand. So what is different on this public works versus, oh, so public works is the rest of the team?
Right.
Office and admin is the other half of your team?
Right.
I got it. So salary and benefits?
For that one, I think we need to let her look at all of that because this is, part of that is staffing issue from this year.
Yep.
And then we need to know why materials and supplies compared to this year would be, you know, thirty thousand more next year. Why maintenance and contract would be, you know, twenty thousand more.
So is this action item number six?
Yep. Because that's, right now, it's about a twenty five percent increase.
So action item number six is for Lori to dig into twenty twenty one projected versus twenty twenty two budget? Now then, farmer's market, I think this one is pretty explainable, so I think we should be comfortable with this one?
Yep.
Why is this going up another thousand?
The stipends.
Stipend?
Stipends.
Did we just, did I increase it for twenty twenty one? We, stipends?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
To Councilmember Blake. The stipends that we paid in twenty twenty one are coming out of the twenty twenty one budget. And what isn't reflected in this is that the budget is fifteen hundred dollars, but we bring in probably a thousand dollars in revenues from the vendors. So even though we paid the stipends this year, we will not be over budget at all. But we budgeted for them next year.
And that comes in through the permits, revenue permits.
Okay, that's fine, I was curious.
Okay, park areas? And park areas, we don't, is there someone specifically, is this, is this our summer help for the park areas?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, that's good, no, I'm just kidding. So is this another question?
Another question, because right now, the change is sixty seven percent.
Yeah, so this is another one. And what's projected versus what was budgeted?
Materials and supplies, that's really changed.
Yeah. So Lori, is that action item number seven for you?
Okay.
So. So it'd be the salary and benefits, materials, supplies and the, well. So it'd be the salary and benefits, materials, supplies, and the... Well, just that, just that piece, you can dig into it.
Yeah, they're trying to improve the parks, but then the maintenance and contract services are equipment rental, repairs to the equipment.
Right.
So, yeah, but I'll work on that too.
So then we roll down into page eleven. So...
Hang on a minute.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Greenberg.
Jason.
Oh.
Yeah, so we had talked, we had talked about adding nearly a hundred grand in for the parks. So that's capital. That's where it went? Okay, that is. We get there. That's on page nineteen. Got it. So the bottom of page ten is this, what is U R R W?
Upper Rum River Water Management Organization.
Oh, yeah, that's this one. We don't have much of... That's Jeff's favorite one.
Yeah.
Yep.
Just to check we get to right.
Yep, okay, so if we roll onto page eleven, there's contingency that we think we wanna leave in there?
I would recommend it, but it's really a safety net.
And then the transfers out is, comes from that building inspection is my assumption where that transfers out is? Is out? What is that?
No, the transfers out is the money that was... Let me look here. That was what was used last year and put back in. Is that right? For the levy? The ninety... Sorry, my contacts are not working tonight. The first page were the expenditures. Ninety-six thousand, four twenty-five, put back into the revenues because we borrowed last year for this year. So that's the transfers out. And then the bonding, repayment of the bonding.
Okay. So we're comfortable at the ninety-seven-five?
Yeah.
Well, so the transfers out is a revenue, transfers in use of fund balance, so ninety-seven, fourteen... Ninety-six, four twenty-five. A hundred and seven, five in this budget. I'm not following the transfers because she's got a transfer out on the expenditure side of ten thousand and we're on the expenditure here, so I don't... I don't know why. So we were transferring out a hundred and seven, five for twenty-twenty-one?
One of them is the bond repayment, from what I understand. So there was the... Last year, we had to use ninety-six thousand, four twenty-five to keep the levy down, so then it gets transferred back in this year.
Plus interest.
Yeah, plus interest. And I thought the, with the greater being paid off, that was also included in that. Maybe that's not till next year.
Well, the greater's paid off this year.
Mm-hmm. So that probably won't be...
Maintenance building is next year, so. That one, I think we need an explanation because it went from three fifty-three, one eighty-seven, one oh seven, five, ninety-seven, five, and I see she reduced it by ten thousand on the expenditure upfront, but...
I'll get an answer on that.
Yeah, that one.
I might be understanding it incorrectly then.
Because there's our negative ninety-five, four twenty-five on the twenty-twenty-one budget in the fund balance. Yeah, we need an explanation on that one.
Okay, so that's action item number eight. So that gets us to the difference between the projected twenty-twenty-one and actual twenty-twenty-one is the two-seventy-eight and projected two-twenty-one versus budgeted twenty-two of basically one point six versus one point nine, so that three hundred thousand dollar swing.
Yeah, three hundred and twenty-nine.
And it's gonna go, it's not gonna be that, because we added in ten grand for the fire management and we added in about sixty grand for the sheriff, so we added in seventy grand worth of expense, but we have some questions in some of the costs, so. Best best case if we were, I don't know, I can't say that, because I gotta know where the cost is, so. But I think those, if we have those eight action items, then we can come back and Jeff and Mary like to see a little bit more detail on those, so that might be some areas where we wanna see a little more detail.
Easy.
And then the... Yeah, like we had said initially, if we were to take a look at the twenty-twenty-one projected actual with a ten percent increase, and what does, what does that look like?
So if we do one, five, nine...
So the goal would be with the twenty-twenty-one projected with a ten whatever, ten plus percent increase and the sheriff's in there.
Plus the seventy thousand between the sheriffs and the, and the fire department?
Yep. How close can we get to the twenty-twenty-one?
That's one point eight, two, two.
Right.
Eight forty-two. So Jeff is saying his goal is one, eight, two, two, eight forty-two.
My goal is one, eight, seven, one.
One, eight, seven, one?
I'm looking, how close can we get to budgeted twenty-twenty-one?
Yeah, because that would be below twenty-twenty-one.
Yeah.
So I'm saying if you went up from twenty-twenty-one projected ten percent plus out of the seventy thousand for the sheriffs and the fire, that only gets you to one, eight, two, two. So there's still...
Oh, the sheriff is gonna be... I added a hundred and fourteen for the sheriff.
Well, because it's, the budget for twenty-twenty-two was three thirteen and you said it was three seventy-three.
Now, that's true, then, then, yes, I doubled.
So that's sixty thousand more.
Sixty thousand, yeah.
And then the fire department, you said, was two eighty-two versus two-seventy-six, so I'm just saying that's ten grand, so that's seventy.
So it appears we can get in, it looks like we can get in at the twenty-twenty-one budgeted number.
Feels like there's opportunity there, right? So your goal is somewhere between one, eight, two, and one, eight, seven?
Correct.
And with, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
And with the action items that we've tasked Lori with, we may not need that ten percent.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So Lori's goal, when she comes back?
Yeah, I was just saying that, because I didn't have access to everything Lori knows about staffing and some of these other things that may have been artificially low this year. I don't know what else we might not have done this year. I don't know if, you know, crack ceiling is more significant one year versus another year, you know, those types of things. That's where I put the adjustment factor, ten percent in there.
Okay.
So kept us in there.
Now, Mr. Mayor, if we flip to page twelve and get on to revenues.
The big one is going to be the twenty-twenty-two budget, the six, one, one million, six twenty-six. We needed that because we needed to cover our expenses, so if we're... We don't have to charge that in taxes if we're gonna be a lower expenditure. So can we be more in line with a million, four seventy on tax levy?
And the million, four seventy on tax levy versus million, six on the tax levy is based on?
We're at a million, six because our expenditures were a million, nine.
Okay, so that's, so this, this is all, will be redone based on what we come up with on... Okay.
Yep. That number just, whatever you're spending, you gotta get it somewhere that comes through.
So then, you know, the next couple of pages, when I look them over, are just kind of some, are some of the rationale for why it changed, right?
Yep.
So then if we get into the revenues, the first one that hits us is the recycle, the recycling piece. And we talked about for twenty-twenty-two, that thirty-one thousand should be fifty-one thousand.
What page, Jason?
Page seventeen. So revenue should be fifty-one thousand versus thirty-one thousand because we're gonna get a twenty thousand dollar grant for the guard check?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I, because it's a grant and it's, I mean, we're pretty much guaranteed, but I would hate to come up
So you wanna leave it on?
Twenty-eight thousand on the short. I was just, when I had said that, is that we have that opportunity to get forty-nine thousand, that some of it's gonna be dedicated.
I got you. So on the recycling page?
So do you want that left out?
I'd say...
Yeah, because it's not. And if it comes in by, well, we won't know until, you know, well, if it comes in by the time we vote on this in December, then we can add that back, then we can add it, and then that'll reduce it.
So does anybody have any questions or problems with page seventeen on the budget? On the budget for twenty-twenty-two or the projected for twenty-twenty-one? Because when I look at the projected, it looks like we got a grant and we don't show we're getting a grant in twenty-twenty-two. So that's kind of the difference on the revenue side. And the expenditures? There's a question on the nineteen thousand on capital outlay for twenty-twenty-one?
Right. So if you take, take a look at the expenditures, without that nineteen thousand, which we think is the grant.
Okay.
Uh, you're at thirty-eight thousand, seven.
So...
And so the difference between that and the budgeted for twenty-twenty-two is sixty-eight percent.
Okay.
Is that in cameras? No, not in twenty-twenty-one.
That was twenty-twenty-one.
No, no, that was, that was twenty-nineteen.
So action item number nine is what?
Remove the grant.
Remove the grant and then see what we, why we have sixty-eight percent increase.
Okay, so Lori, is that clear?
So if we can, if we can get that back closer to twenty-twenty-one projected, how realistic is that with what we're doing with current staffing and... The other, the other question I would have is charges for services, twenty-twenty-one projected is twenty-four, four, and twenty-twenty-two revenue is eighteen, nine. Do we think charges for services is gonna go up with an attendant? So we're getting paid more for what's coming in? And then where does revenue from actually hauling it? So we recycle our oil and our glass and our cardboard, where does that show up on the revenue side?
Is that clear, Lori?
Yeah.
Okay. So if I move on to page eighteen. Sorry. You're good. So help me understand what I'm looking at here with total debt, with revenues and expenditures and the fees. If I look at twenty-twenty-two versus twenty-twenty-one projected, it's eighteen thousand different and then it's about the same different the other way on the expenditures. And it says reduced levy for the greater debt service. So we paid off the greater in twenty-twenty-one, so...
And then twenty-twelve, there's a twenty-twelve A improvement debt that we have and that, I believe, was a road improvement and that's getting paid off too.
Okay.
So that, yeah, that one's getting paid off.
Don't we pay off, I thought we were paying off the maintenance building?
Maybe that's what this improvement debt is then.
Yeah, that's, that's why we, we refunded, we refinanced to get the sheriff's contract. We refinanced the maintenance building, so that, that should pay off the greater and in twenty-twenty-two will pay off the maintenance building and twenty-twenty-three will pay off the engine fifty. So the three open bonds we have right now will be, one's done, you paid it off in August. One will be done next year. And when is that principal? Is that August or is that early in the year on the?
That I'll have to look. I don't know that.
So one will be next year and then one will be the following year. And the, the understanding is that we would keep that funding in the process to cover new bonds, to offset new bonds. So we're not gonna reduce the levy to, because these are paid off.
Yeah.
We're gonna roll those funds into the new bonding.
We're gonna roll that into the new one. So help me understand, it says revenues and taxes, so taxes twenty-twenty-one projected, one-seventy-seven versus eighty-one thousand.
Yeah.
So why is it? Why is it ninety-six thousand dollars less? And then if I look at special assessments, fifty grand versus a hundred and thirty? I, I don't know what that means.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I don't, I don't know why the taxes with the special assessments, I believe that's the road project.
So that's the road?
People are gonna pay us back.
If they pay in it, you know?
Okay, so that's, that's what we... Okay. But I don't understand why that, why would the taxes be ninety-six thousand dollars less?
I will ask. I don't know that answer.
Is that, is that action item? Is that action item number nine?
That's a big typo. I don't think so.
No, so projected is one-seventy-seven, five, and the, the twenty-twenty-two budget is eighty-one, three, so it's ninety-eight thousand dollars. I mean, it's, the budgeted was one-seventy-nine, three, so this one needs some explanation because...
Yeah, I, I'd like to understand a mountain butter. Okay.
I don't, I don't think it's a typo, because it's, you know, it transfers through to the fifty-five percent.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, that...
I'm thinking it'd be, it's supposed to be one-even-one, so I guess when I...
Your typo would be, like, they forgot a one.
Yeah. Looking at the numbers.
The formula, the formula works, we just think it's missing a one, so.
Yeah.
You could be wrong.
A very important one.
It's a very important one.
I'm looking, trying to work through this my first time, like, wow, that seems like a big change. So can you follow up on that, Lori?
Yep.
And then when we get into expenditures, we think we know why it's less from the expenditures, because we've got reduced levy fees for the greater and the re, and the refinancing of the building, right? So I think based on that, I'm probably comfortable with the two fifty-six versus the two sixty-nine. Okay.
We, we should, you know, we should understand what those numbers are, though.
Okay, so action item number ten, verify that the two fifty-six versus two sixty-nine is because of those, what's highlighted in blue.
Because the greater debt was, that was twenty-nine thousand a year. So it's, it's more than the difference here.
Right, but there's some stuff coming back on in twenty-twenty-two as well, right?
We'll start to pay that bond off.
Right.
Well, that bond will start paying till twenty-twenty-three.
So that's action, that's action item number ten for Lori.
Yeah, because that, that bond doesn't come back till twenty-twenty-three.
We'll let her handle that in action number ten. So if I go into capital, this is, Councilmember Greenberg's asked where this was. Here you go. Page nineteen. Twenty-two hundred-two budget is an increase over twenty-twenty-one of a hundred grand and that's itemized there with a pickleball court, memorial park improvements that we talked about, disc golf improvements that we talked about, and then some beach improvements that we talked about, so these were estimates that we asked the accountant to look at the last time that we were gonna add into the, add into the levy, right?
No. These are, these are coming out of the fund balance. This would be a capital. This was our park and trail fund.
Okay, so do we have a hundred grand to cover this?
We have currently two hundred and fifty-five thousand.
Okay, so we're gonna spend a hundred of it?
Now, now, I would say we asked Lori and, and, so we asked Lori on the Tuesday, she had this back to us by Friday and she was out of the country.
Yeah.
I don't know that how realistic these numbers are.
So, but we can prioritize. We got a hundred thousand that we're gonna spend next year and that's the short list. I mean, you ask for shovel-ready projects, so there's a short list of four and we can decide on what the priority is, if it's one, two, three, four down the list, but we got a hundred thousand that we are gonna invest in the community to improve the parks and we think that these are the four big hitters that we would go after. Is that correct?
That's what I had, Mr. Mayor.
So I just wanna make sure we get...
I'm just saying that, that doesn't affect, my understanding, the levy. This will come out of our capital fund for the parks.
I just wanna make sure we're all clear on where the money's coming from and, and...
And if we choose to go through, if these real, turned out to be realistic numbers, there is money in a fund to do this.
Okay, because what, what we, what I would like to do then is, as we get into twenty-twenty, if we think, if it's, since it's twenty-twenty-two, then we would need, I'm assuming, some RCAs to move forward and get this work done, right? Okay. Jason, can I interject? Yep. Uh, one of the things we also...
You have to ask me.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Greenberg.
May I interject?
Yes.
Mr. Algers. Yeah, so one of the things we talked...
Yeah, so one of the things we talked about, so when the turn of the year comes would be to contact those committees and somehow get them involved in the research of.
Right.
Said projects so they can feel a part of the process.
I, I totally agree, I, I just want to get through that. We've got money set aside, it's a hundred grand, we don't know how much we can get done with a hundred grand based on, you know, what? I mean, I looked at the basketball court, it's, the asphalt's a little rough, I don't know if it's, would make a.
So, could use some help.
It's a little rough, so, but I, it's like if we agree that these are the four priorities that we discussed and want to go over, then let's agree on, okay, in January, let's get cracking because if we can, if we want this pickleball court, if we agree that that's kind of the first one we want to go after, it needs to be done by March or April, so, you know, in the April, May timeframe, so people can enjoy it, not looking at it in August and September, right?
Then it's too hot.
It's too late. Okay, so page.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raino.
I, I, I think we need to, as a council, we've not prioritized the four, those are four.
Yeah.
Things that were mentioned. If we, we could prioritize in September or October, if we wanted to at a council meeting, start that process of them so that the committees can meet, they can determine costs associated with putting up pickleball, look at what we have, what do we need to do, what's that going to cost? So that we can vote on it, so we're ready to start in April, because if we just start the process in April, we won't get it started until, uh, very good.
Can we?
That's, that's a good point and we need to make note of it.
Action item number eleven. Lori. October.
October.
Council agenda.
Our priorities.
Our priorities.
And, and I would like to know, what is swim beach improvements? What are we talking about? I mean, that's.
We talked a little bit about widening the beach.
Just the widening of the beach, okay.
Maybe refreshing the sand.
Yeah.
And possibly, um.
Prove the sand a little bit.
I have no idea, you know, the, the weeds, they kind of.
Close, that's right, okay. I, yeah, but so is it, can we do what we want?
Yeah, those are all like, where did you get the many involved, right?
Right. Someone call the DNR.
Right.
Call them first because they're going to dictate what we can do.
Exactly.
In the water. Exactly.
All right, page twenty.
Page twenty. We only got twenty-two pages to go.
So, the, my question is, uh, the concession stand door and the pavilion improvements, those seem high to me. Why wouldn't those be a part capital? That's permanent structures in the park.
I think they were just considered building improvements, but they could be moved to park.
Yeah, because I would say that's definitely a park.
And I have one bid for the door and I'm waiting for the bid on some other stuff interior, which I hope to have for the September.
Okay.
The well, um, there was a note that we had last time that there's a, uh, fire, state fire department grant, uh, exists for the state at one point one million. Potentially for turnout gear, we're checking with the DNR, I think, on, on wells. So, there's, the, uh, fire department is going to be looking at wells coming up here in the next few weeks. Public-private partnerships will be discussed, DNR grants will be discussed, so that's a placeholder, we don't know if that number's high, low. It's just a placeholder at this point.
Okay.
The fire department will be investigating that and getting back to us. The seventy-five thousand council chamber improvements was put in the fund previously. So, it should still be in the fund balance.
What is it for?
I think it was for this place, right?
So, we can get rid of the squirrel holes and.
Yes, I agree.
So, so, and, and again, it's, it's something that's there and right now, we, we, we have a transfer of twenty-five thousand budgeted in here for capital funds, uh, and seventy-two, five that's going into equipment funds. So, we have money that, that are being transferred, so this shouldn't keep growing. Because this is a shared building, there's also the potential for CDBG funds because it's used by the seniors. Right now, we don't have another good fire exit, we're sitting in front of the only other exit.
What is CDGB?
Uh, it's the, uh.
Community block, block development grant. What is it?
Community block development grants.
No, CD, CD, community development block.
Block, sorry. CDBG.
I got you.
And it, it's, it's specific funds for, um, it's used for low income, there, there's a variety of limitations on it. Typically, seniors fall into the categories that qualify, that's how we got the remodeling done that we did with the kitchen and the bathrooms. Uh, one of the proposals would be to, because right now, if you're using that kitchen, if you've ever been here when the seniors are here, they go in, they heat their food up in the kitchen and everybody's coming in from the outside, into the kitchen, out of the kitchen and out into here. So, the, the CDBG grants could potentially open up the kitchen so you have an in and out, you're not all jumping, running, bumping into each other.
I got you.
And then we would put in a handicap exit because right now, our own, this is not a handicap accessible exit. If they could get by us, it's all steps. So, what we would do is.
Well, this one is our problem, yeah.
Yeah, this one, but then you're coming in and out the same, you don't have an exit, you have an entrance. And so, again, from a COVID standpoint and from CDBG, we talked about putting a door in this corner so you'd have a ramp going out the backside, come in one and out the other. But anyway.
Okay.
There's improvements that could be shared with county block grants, uh, potentially with COVID money and with money we have set aside.
So, it feels like the money's there, it feels like action item number twelve was to put this like on a October or November docket on what we actually want to do and another maybe ad hoc committee that is code shared by somebody to figure this out, just to actually get them, the money spent and get moving, right?
Yep.
Okay. So, road improvement fund, page twenty-one. There's twenty-two pages, all right, twenty-one. So, twenty-one projected, the revenues is one nine, one point nine million versus ten thousand? So, help me understand what's going on there. Bond, the bond issue is one point nine, one point nine million, so there's no bond issued for road improvements in two thousand and twenty-two. Is that correct?
At this time, that's correct.
So, we should be good with that number because the bond for the next series of roads is going to be two thousand and twenty-three, right?
Maybe.
What's that?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, then if we roll down to expenditures.
Now, now, again, somewhere in there, that eighty-nine thousand for the small cities road fund has to show up as a revenue.
So, is there an action item there?
Yeah, it should, should, should be showing up as a projected revenue.
So, is that action item number thirteen? There you go.
Does that go in the capital or is it just going to?
And do we have a deadline on using that? So, it has to be used for roads, we're going to talk about potentially signs?
I don't think there's a deadline, I think it's just, um, we receive it, uh, the second, let's see, the June and July and then the second portion, the end of the year. No, I don't have anything that says it has to be used by a certain time.
Okay. So, that eighty-nine thousand, the action item is determine where it should be at? And then the second act, the second piece of that is can we do signs with it?
Correct.
Dramatically correct signs?
I pulled my ear out and you can look at it, I'm sorry.
I've, I've, to be honest, I don't even know what you're talking about.
They're all over.
S T O P E, stop instead of stop?
A stop, is that, no. No, they're just, the N W, which should be capitalized, is a large N and a small W.
So, you want all of those replaced?
Uh, well, I don't.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna start driving with blinders. But no, I, that, I'm not saying replace all of them, I just want to going forward. And you are doing it correctly, I tried to bring that up before and.
But you know, many years ago, that's what they did.
No, no.
Yes, yes. In school, you taught capital and lowercase and, uh, period, years ago.
But I've never seen a stopless sign, or I've never seen a street sign in any location, even the ones that were.
You're just saying, and the new one's going forward.
You want apple and yellow and.
Let's make it to the same standard.
Yes, yes, yes.
Gotcha.
I thought roads were spelled wrong.
No.
Me too.
Actually, there is a debate on Jasper, it's being spelled two ways.
Different, yeah.
Okay, now you J A S.
All right, we're.
Y R A.
We're wandering, we're wandering.
Yeah, yeah, so that's pretty easy in this one.
Expenditures, so two thousand and twenty-one projected, one point two-six versus a budget of two million versus the two thousand and twenty-two budget of nine twenty-four. So, help me understand the difference between one point two and nine twenty-four. I mean, one point two should be for the projects this year, nine twenty-four is carryover and completion, or is that new projects?
See, I, I think this one, we need to take a look at because there's, there's repair and maintenance contractual. We have a fund that we fund, have been funding for road projects independent of the bond issue.
Okay.
And so, what we've got here is, there's improvements, but we need to be able to tie, because if, if you look at the bond issue on the revenue side, it's a one million, nine fifty-five on the projected, budgeted two point six. Down below, we've got improvements of, of one point one four oh. So, why don't the bond issue and the improvements match?
So, is that?
And, and then the repair and maintenance contractual, is that the funds we've been doing independent of the bonds? And so, we need to understand, if, if I had my, my, uh, council packet with me, I could go and say, here's what we currently have in road funds.
Okay.
But we have to be, we have to set aside what's bonded and part of it's going to pay for last year's roads, part of it's going to pay for this year's roads. And, and then part of that bond is going to go separate.
So, do you know what this eight sixty actually is going to cover next year?
No.
Okay. So, that's action item number.
So, if, if, if we had eight hundred and sixty left over from this year's bonds, I'd say let's, let's knock eight, eight hundred and sixty off and start new next year because we don't have a project for next year.
Yeah, and you have to spend it within three years, right?
Right.
So, your proposal would be if that's really extra, get rid of it, lower the bond.
Yeah.
The levy for, that would be, that would be carrying into two thousand and twenty-three, right?
Correct.
Okay, so that's the question, Lori. And then the other question is what is that sixty-four thousand dollars cover, right? For re, repair and maintenance contractual?
That wouldn't be anything to do with the bonds, that would be in addition, but, um, I will get more detail on that.
Okay.
Yeah, because, because we went from projected one twenty-five, seven in two thousand and twenty-one and then we've got sixty-four, so I.
Okay.
I don't know how we jumped from, from fourteen, you know, that's expenditures, I guess. So, we jumped big time this year, so somewhere we're spending, we spent a hundred and, and, uh, ten thousand dollars more this year than last year.
And Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raino.
I guess, I question under expenditures, repair and maintenance contractual. To me, when I think of capital, we're putting money into a structure and repair and maintenance of a road is, to me, that's not a structure, it's a road. Is that in the right place? If, if it's what we use to.
This, this would gen, this would normally be, the repair and maintenance contractual would be a general fund item.
Yeah, that's what I.
And from that, we, we pay for hot patch, we pay for.
The extras of, on the road projects, that, that's, so having that in capital, to me, that doesn't fit.
Yeah, let me find out what it, what it involves and why she thinks it's capital.
It wouldn't pass, it wouldn't pass corporate, I mean, like, it wouldn't pass corporate accounting. If it's a repair, it's not capital, but like if you grind it all and replace it, then it's capital. So, it depends, depends what you're doing.
Yeah, if you're out there hot patching.
Yeah.
Or striping.
Okay, seeing, are you clear on the action item there? All right, so we're on the last page of the capital replacement. So, this is where we've kind of got our, uh, our list of stuff that's included in the, uh, two thousand and twenty-two bond that we were going to put in, correct? So, this is the mower, the replacement truck for the maintenance team, the replacement truck for the, uh, uh, fire department, the, what are the, what's the extrication tools?
For the fire department.
Fire department.
Everything from the tanker on down is fire department.
So, that's the rest of it and the recommendation was to at least put that in the bond?
And, and that is structured differently than the bond from a tax standpoint. So, that, right now, this, this shows nine hundred and one thousand, five hundred. So, we got the tanker through turnout gear is five hundred and fifty-six, five. And then three hundred and forty-five thousand for the Toro and the Sterling.
Yep.
So, the tanker, the sterling and the, um, extrication tools need to come out of this because it's going to be in the bond.
I thought all of the.
I think all of it is.
The whole thing.
Yeah, but what we talked last time was all of this would go into the bond into two thousand and twenty-three. So, this would be the, this would be.
Yeah, the idea was to, to take advantage of the, the low interest rate and the, uh, existing bond process, get this, so we continue to, to, um, fund the equipment replacement and we don't deplete it right away with this, so.
Yeah, I remember, I just, I didn't know that all of these line items were added into there, but.
Yes.
Yes.
That, that was the understanding.
Because then the, the discussion we had was, per Jeff, is we keep going on the equipment fund to fund like the next generation, like seven, seven or nine years from now when we use the license over, we're, we won't have the bond because we'll have, but we don't have a big enough egg right now to cover all this stuff, so. So, that, I'm, I guess I understand why the costs are so different and that's going to go into the bond into two thousand and twenty-two, which would pay for this equipment. And then it would be, the bond would be issued in two thousand and twenty-two and it would show up in the two thousand and twenty-three budget, right?
Yes.
So, I guess.
So, so then one of the action items would be because, um, the equipment portion of the bond is treated separately from a tax standpoint and then the road portion, we need to understand that clearly. How does this affect taxes versus the road affecting taxes?
And who would be able to answer that?
Lori was explaining that to us last time, but.
Okay.
It was, it was getting late.
And, and my question is, seeing, seeing kind of where do we need to put this in the agenda so that we can get, move forward with getting this equipment on order so that it will be here in two thousand and twenty-two?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raino.
I, I understood that the fire department will take care of that, that that's there, as far as the tanker on down.
So, the fire department's going to own those and is Lori going to?
And then, then the, the council should, I think the, the mistake we made last time is not clearly communicating what the expectations were from the council on how to, to follow up on the mower and the, the truck. Because the, the truck kind of ate up the mower last time and if there's, so I, you had stated it clearly, I think, when we talked about this with the truck, uh, back in March or April, April, I guess it was, there was an action item, come back with a plan, we never got back to that at all.
Okay.
Um, but there were specific steps on, here's what the council's communicating so that staff can, can follow through. So, I think that's what we need to do.
So.
I would say that's probably in October.
So, can you go back and look at that to see what, what we, kind of where we left that and summarize that?
The reason why it got left was, as you're all aware, um, for a staff member being out now.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Absolutely, but I think we just, we want to pick this thing back up so that if it's going to be bonded, we need to move forward with it. Okay. So.
I, so, so then, then what I think we'll need to look at then for a future meeting because we didn't get to the capital part of this, so we're not, because we didn't discuss the capital part, we're not putting extra funds into this year's budget for capital. If we want to, we need to do that before the end of September. But if you take a look at July twenty-third. If we want to, we need to do that before the end of September. But if you take a look at July 23rd memo, capital improvement, equipment replacement plans.
Was that in the packet?
It was in, uh, what we received on July 23rd. That's what Lori put together just before she departed the country. Um, there is a, an MS4 pond cleanup that we started the fund for. Just again, this was because we were just, uh, brainstorming. Remember we were doing the capital plan, we brainstormed the park stuff and, and some of this other stuff. Um, we just threw a number out there, $10,000 a year for start building up for when we have to clean up ponds. There's ditches and culverts which are part of the road plan, but have never been funded. We don't really have a plan on. But all the roads that don't have ditches, need to have ditches. Those that have ditches that are filled in need to be cleaned out. And culverts that aren't working need to be made operational. So that's going to be something that we have to start planning for as well.
Mr. Mayor.
Addition to road work. Councilmember Greenberg.
Uh, and on top of that, the URW and the big long word, uh, they have said that we need to, by I think 2022, we need to have Joe go through the city and make an assessment of every culvert that's in the city. And we have to give the, the Upper Room a
Health report?
A synopsis of all of our, or some, hey, I just want to throw that out there.
I might have that information already for you. I'll check.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raino.
Councilmember Greenberg, did they give, um, a standard as to how they want, what they want?
Yeah, there's some pretty specific. There's pretty, some pretty specific things in there. Um, I can get that to Lori again.
I would just have the number of culverts but, and location, but if you have information more than that.
Do we have to know their condition?
That's what I'm wondering. That's my question is what is it that the Upper Room River watershed wants in this inventory?
Would you like to see that as well?
I just want to make sure, I don't care. I want to make sure that whoever's going to do the report has the information that they need to provide to Upper Room River. I don't want to have staff spend three days on a report, send it to them and they say this is not what we're looking for, this is what we want. So let's have what they want so that we can do the report.
Probably going to be similar to what we have to do for the MS4 reporting.
Mr. Mayor, you were saying on the capital?
Yeah, the, um, so on the, the, um, capital improvement plan, this needs to be updated. We don't have anything for recycling center modification. Um, and we've got public service building improvements and council changer improvements. I don't know if they're the same thing. So if we look at this, she was trying to incorporate what we brainstormed.
Yep.
Um, and so I don't know if it's a realistic number on the pond cleanup. Again, this, this begs the, what is our road plan? What is our MS4 plan? Our road plan, if you, if you ever look through it, has the condition of the ditches, doesn't have the culverts. But we do have spots where culverts have caved in under roads and we've had to replace them. Uh, so we need a plan on three types of culverts. There's a metal corrugated, there's concrete, and then there's a composite material that Elk River is using quite a bit now. If we're replacing these, the culvert is, one is it under the road? Two is what, what are we going to replace it with? Certain ones bake concrete, certain ones it's new composite. But we need to have a better understanding of the culverts the city is responsible for, separate from the culverts that homeowner is responsible for. But that's something we've never budgeted for, the ditch work. Um, and this is going to get to staffing because it's, it's challenging right now to, to keep even our weed whipping or our ditch mowing done, let alone ditch repair done. Ditch repairs, a lot of work if you're hauling materials. So, so those are things we need to take a look at. Again, we have numbers that are put in here. RIPS, road improvement plans. Um, we've got 900,000 next year and 400,000 every year after that. We need to know what's realistic, what's really coming up. Signs need to go on here. So this, this needs more work. And because we don't know that, we're not funding any of these things yet. We don't really have a fund for whatever $900,000 we might be doing next year. So if, if this can be updated before the end of September and we find we need to start putting some money in this year for it, otherwise it's not going to start funding till next year. Which again, we know is going to be a bad year to add extra cost if we're going to be covering the bonds.
Mr. Mayor, where does that, where does that fit into the 1.82 to 1.87 that we just said was the?
If, if, uh, if we've realized that there's something here we need to start funding now, that would have to be on top.
Okay. So is that another action for Lori? Or is that a hold until we get?
I, I would say it's an action item for us to see how realistic, well, the, for Lori, I would say the ditches and the culverts and the roads are an action item.
Is that, that's going to be on top of the 182 to 187, right?
Yeah. As, as far as I can tell, I mean, where are we getting $900,000 for roads next year? Even if we're paying half of it, that's still 450 we got to come up with. And if we're going to start ditches and culverts next year, we got to, we got to fit that in. If we want to do it in the general fund out of the road, you know, in the public works budget, maybe we start with that. But we have to have a plan because these things need to be done and we don't have a plan for them right now. You know, again, I don't know where the, uh, I believe the pond cleanup MS4 was that 10,000 we were, we were wondering about. So that, that one's already in here, but. But the 900,000 is not.
My concern is we aren't going to have a very good number in a week and a half for that project. So do we put a plug in there of a X dollar amount and see how far that gets as we get into the 2022 planning? Or do we take that up as an action item that we need to develop a plan in 2022 so that we can fund it in 2023?
Yeah, I, I say let's see how close we can get to our target number. And then I would recommend we, we put a placeholder in there to get started.
Okay.
Um, depending on where our number is.
Okay. So Lori's got 15 action items.
17.
17 action items. We come back in what day?
Right now, we're scheduled a week from today.
Seven, right?
So Lori, what, with what you're looking at, what's realistic? And again, we have to have a final budget into the county by the 30th. Our original intention was to finalize everything in a week and then sign off on it on 14. But with what we just assigned, and Labor Day coming up, and, and are you anticipating being the only one in the office the rest of this week or?
Am I anticipating what? Being the only one in the office the rest of this week? Uh, no, just yesterday and today. Um, Ellen will be back tomorrow. But tomorrow and Thursday, I'm working completely on the, um, standard and pores information. I've got reports to send out and information to gather for that. So this week I won't be able to do any of this.
So, so Tuesday's out.
And Tuesday, council packet is due and I have payroll that I have to do tomorrow too for employees and payroll for council and fire department next Tuesday.
Okay. So Tuesday's out. The next Monday is, or next Tuesday is council. What do you think, before we schedule anything, what do you think can realistically be done? When can we meet again?
We meet on the 13th, do Monday, Tuesday night? Because at the end of that next week, I'm out of town on Friday and I'm probably leaving Thursday. So that gives Lori a week.
Or the 9th, a Thursday.
Yeah, I'm going to, we're packing up and we're leaving on Thursday.
Monday, the 13th, I, I'm available.
So when are you leaving?
I'm leaving the 9th, that evening.
So how about is it 13th or the 16th?
I can't do the 16th.
Okay. So the 13th? And we can review this. So you can get it to us, we can review it. And it still gives us kind of a week. You know, gives us.
When do we need to sign off on it?
Two weeks.
This is 6 o'clock again.
We would, uh, we need to have it to the county by the 30th. So we do the 13th. We could sign off as late as uh, the 27th. Right now we have P and Z on the 28th and LGO on the 29th and the 30th is due, so.
So we're talking the 13th of what?
September.
Okay. So the day before our council meeting.
6 o'clock, yes, the end of time.
6 o'clock. So, and, and then if we have any tweaks, we have the 20th. Is everybody available on the 20th? We needed it.
We're going to assume no tweaks.
I couldn't do the 20th, but I could do the 23rd.
I can't do that.
I can't. How about 13th and then save the 27th? Can his 27th be saved?
I have five with the 27th.
All right. So pencil in, uh, ink in the 13th and pencil in the 27th.
6 o'clock on that one too?
Joe, you text me earlier than 6:01 too next time. Give me a text like at 5:50. Okay. So we're taking off next week. We're removing that budget meeting, right?
The 7th.
The 7th, we're removing that.
Yeah. Yep. How are you? Is that ready to bring it up?
Yep. You can't make that work.
Okay.
All right. So make the motion to adjourn?
I make the motion that we adjourn.
13th at 6 o'clock.
And 27th possibly.
And the 27th at 6 o'clock possibly. All right. Thank you, team.
Does anyone second it?
I second. I third.
All right. We adjourned.